Good evening, everyone. We're calling this work session into order. We're going to hear amendments and updates to three companion bills, 21-0172, 21-0173, and 21-0174. As you know, I believe this is the eighth hearing that we've had on these companion bills, specifically targeting providing access to homeownership to Baltimoreans in some of our distressed areas. I think that we've had a very transparent and robust discussion since November the 15th, when the bill was introduced. Excited by all the participation, not just from the administration, but also we even have our amazing comptroller on and some of the dialogue that we had with the council. I think that reconvening from what we did on... Oh, first and foremost, want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I know we had some document issues before, so we tried to ensure that we cleaned that up. So, all council members in one email should have the memo from the Law Department that explains the technical amendments on 21-173 as well as 21-0174. They should have the amendments for 173 and 74. They do not reflect the technical changes that the Law Department is going to talk to us about tonight. But as soon as we get the update, you guys will have that, but it's important to kind of talk it over and make sure we're on the same page. You also have the Urban Institute study and data to go along with our most recent amendments for 21-0172. It really outlines specific characteristics of Baltimore City. More importantly, why this is important and two, how we got to the posture of this particular bill. Obviously, there's been a lot of back and forth, but also just a lot of work in the background to get us where we are. And that's why we thought it was important to include that, as well as updated amendment tracker to reflect the most recent status. That way, you can utilize that tracker. You'll see the amendments that have been approved and the amendments that are still pending that we will have to vote on. With that said, I'm going to call on the comptroller. I know that he was able to provide some recommendations to the council and ultimately come up with an amendment. I know that it's for 21-0173. I see it as a friendly amendment. I know the sponsor of the bill also is in very support of it. I think it goes to the heart of a lot of the concerns that we've heard, not just from housing, but also from members of the council. As I stated before, we tried to keep a very open process and honest process and transparent process. I was excited that the comptroller was so interested in the bill to even come and provide recommendation. I've already talked about his subject matter expertise of working on the council. So now, without continuing to stain on my soapbox and talk about how amazing our comptroller is, I'm going to pass it over to Bill Henry. So, Mr. Comptroller, the floor is yours to kind of go over your amendment.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. That's quite a buildup. I'll try to make the substance worth the introduction.
Next time, I'll bring out the drums. Sorry about that this time.
That's okay. For the... So, there is one amendment that I am offering to the committee for 21-0173. And that is the one that I did talk a little bit about Monday. Increasing the threshold for the grant from $25,000 to $50,000. And that is all there is to that one. It's literally on page five of that bill in line 16, strike $25,000 and substitute $50,000. I did also have a couple other amendments that DLR had not finished drafting to 172 that I was hoping to offer at this time. I believe they've been shared with your office. I don't know if they were shared directly with the committee or if they were... We were expecting committee staff to share them with the committee. Have you... Has anyone received those?
No, we haven't gotten it back from DLR. But if you could walk us through it, comptroller.
Okay, I'm being told that they were sent to individual committee members. So, but it was this afternoon. So, if individual committee members want to check their email, but I'll go through them. The first one is on page five in line 21 after the semicolon, insert "and", and then on that same page, strike lines 22 through 25 inclusive. And on that same page in line 26, strike Roman numeral four and substitute Roman numeral two. And on that same page, strike lines 28 through 30 inclusive. And I have a reprint or an interliniated copy. What this refers to is in Section 2C3, available properties, under the Section B Property Registry, Registry Criteria. It basically eliminates the second and third criteria, namely, the property is able to be repaired and made compliant with the Building, Fire, and Related Codes Article and the Health Article. And the property is likely to be purchased by a prospective homeowner and just leaves the other two categories as the two categories for the registry criteria and then removes the property inspection section where the department must include an estimated cost of repairs. This was in keeping with the conversation the council president and I had where we were discussing the relative merits of requiring DHCD to have more technical expertise to help the program participants in the program versus putting most of the weight of the technical expertise on private contractors that would work with the program participants, either being connected by the banks that are doing the financing or by the nonprofit housing counselor groups that are doing the HUD training. I mean, the reality is HCD as it is right now, there's nobody there who could do this. Like, there is no capacity at HCD to go out and do contract estimating for any of the vacant houses. This is something that, you know, many of us have run into over the years when we've got a vacant house... I'm sorry. When council people have vacant houses in their districts and reach out to HCD for assistance, HCD is often unable to give a reasonable estimate of what would be involved to fix that house up. And so, the expectation that I was taking was that we should be putting that responsibility off onto a private contractor. And that is referenced later on in one of the next amendments. That was amendment number one. Amendment number two is on page seven in line 29, strike "and", and on that same page in line 30, strike the period and substitute "and", and on that same page after 30, insert Roman numeral seven, excuse me, "assigned acknowledgement that the applicant is accepting the property in its present condition". And that... What... I'm trying to see where that is in the interliniated. So, that would be in, for those of you following at home, in Section 2C4A... I'm sorry. Section 2C4B, Application Process, under two requirements, there are... There's a list of six items that the application must include. This just includes a seventh one, which is basically just an acknowledgement by the participant that they're getting the property from the city as is, so that there is absolutely no confusion either on their part or the part of the bank that the city is going to have any responsibility for doing anything to the property before it is conveyed over to the program participant. Okay, amendment three on page eight. And this gets a little bit back to what I was discussing earlier. On page eight in line seven, strike Departments. And on that same page and that same line, after Property, insert "as estimated by a licensed and bonded contractor hired by the program participant", which is dealing with the part earlier about not relying on HCD's technical expertise. And on that same page and that same line, after the semicolon, insert "and", and on that same page in line eight, after three, insert "has signed a liability release", and on that same page, strike, beginning with the semicolon in line nine down through and including Department in line 11. And on page nine in line 17, strike the Department and substitute a bonded and licensed contractor hired by the program participant. And on page 10, strike, beginning with the in line three down through and including subtitle in line four and substitute "a bonded and licensed contractor hired by the program participant", and on that same page in line 17, strike the Department and substitute a bonded and licensed contractor hired by the program participant. Unsurprisingly, the point of this amendment is to shift the responsibility for determining what repairs need to be made to the property from HCD to a bonded and licensed contractor hired by the program participant. That is all of amendment three. And then, the amendment four is just on page 11 in line 15, strike 30th and substitute 180th. That's a suggestion to the committee that the enactment date for this ordinance might need more than 30 days to put into effect. And for the more complicated legislation that the council has done over the years, it is not uncommon to look at a six or 12-month enactment date to really give the agencies time to accommodate all the extra work that's going to have to be done to prepare for the program. Treat it as you will. I mean, that's just a suggestion as are they all. But it just seems unlikely that a program of this complexity can be put in place in 30 days. There is one other issue, which DLR had done several amendments, all trying to get at one thing. And I looked through them and I decided not to pass them on because I'm not sure if they really... If they... I'm not sure if they were successful in conveying the concerns that the director of real estate and I had about the concept of trying to repair these properties while they were being leased by the program participants and potentially occupied by the program participants. Not even getting into the issue of the number of houses, which just literally can't be occupied while you're in the process of renovating them because of the scale of the work that needs to be done. Both Mr. Frank and I, drawing on our number of years of dealing with rehab in the city, we were having difficulty trying to follow a path of lenders lending money for rehab when the people they're lending it to don't have actual site control and title to the property.
And Mr. Comptroller, before you go further, there was a technical issue in the bill that has been corrected with in 172. And Aaron DeGraffin, right, he's been working with housing to try to correct that. He's going to go over those corrections tonight as well, so.
That's great. Thank you. Because we were trying to figure out what was a clean way to try to get what we were looking for. And this is what I'm hoping that Mr. DeGraffin right came up with. If we were trying to figure out a legislative way of clearly describing what, for most people, would just be thought of as an ordinary settlement or closing, where the city, the financing, and the program participant all come to a table at the same time and they do a little three-cornered exchange where the city gives the title to the program participant so that they actually have site control. And then, the program participant gives, you know, a mortgage position to the financer and the financer provides money to go into the escrow account for the repairs. So, if you've already done that, that's great. Thank you. That saves me from having to have another difficult conversation through people at DLR.
If you stay on... But yes, after we hear from law, we're going to get into the amendments of... And that is one major amendment that we're going to talk about. And we've been talking about it since the bill was introduced. It's just taken a long time to try to get to a resolution of how we structure it. And like I said, we've been working directly with the Department of Housing Community Development on that. I think there's a question from Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to check in with Elena in the Law Department with the... I like the comptroller's amendments, but I just want to make sure. Are we going to add provisions for equitable conversion as well as risk of loss? So, this basically, I think, the way Bill's Second Amendment basically puts us in as-is status, but also thinking about typical closing, once we sign the contract, anything that happens to the property is responsible... It's a responsibility of the person taking on the property. I just want to make sure if we add that, it's another amendment as well.
I hope Victor's on because he's the one who's championing that bill. Vic, are you available to answer that question?
I'm just wondering if we should add terms of equitable conversion and risk of loss to be compliant? Because it sounds like the comptroller added in a element of a real estate contract to it when he did the as-is. So, I'm wondering if we should add those as well to protect liability from the city.
Okay, I will have to ask Victor about that.
Victor's on, Elena.
Yes, okay, good.
Yeah, and I would say that that's a great idea and we haven't explored it. And so, I don't know exactly what language we would capture that in. And we would be talking to our real estate people, who have a little bit more depth of knowledge about real estate transactions than I do. But I think it's a great idea.
So, Victor, you're going to take that away and talk to the real estate folks?
Yeah, if the councilman can... Can you... Councilman, can you write some language up for me? Just what your concept and send it to me in an email? So, I have something specific to shop to our real estate people, so we can resolve.
Thank you. And Councilman Torrance, if you could copy Director Thompson and as well as Aaron DeGraffin, right? Thank you so much. Are there any other questions for the comptroller? He's basically... He shared his amendments in advance. 99.9% of it, we kind of see as friendly. I don't know, maybe play around with the 180 date. We might keep the 180 date, but, you know, we'll work. But again, I said this Monday and I also said it when we sat down. I really, really appreciate your thoroughness of really going through the bill and supporting us in, you know, trying to get this bill as airtight and in the right direction as much as possible. So, really appreciate the hard work that you and your team have put on. You guys have been on every single call and working with us and really appreciate the partnership that we've had with the comptroller's office.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And I will... I'll try to stay on as long as possible to hear the conversation with Mr. DeGraffin, right? But if not, I will offer up Ms. Kelleher from my office to stay on the call and follow that part of the conversation.
Well, we're going to go to the Law Department and they just have a couple of quick technical updates for us. And then, I'll make sure we pull that up as the next item. So, you'll probably be on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, perfect. Now, flowing from the comptroller's office to the Law Department, I guess, Mr. Pietro or Victor, if you guys want to kind of go over some of the technical pieces that you have. I know that we don't have the formal amendment yet. DLR is a little backed up. But if you could kind of walk us through what you have not walked us through thus far.
Well, I would pick it first and then I'll do the next two bills.
Okay.
On 172, we've caught over it twice at this point. So, I have nothing new to add on 172.
Okay, all right. And so, 173, 174, Elena?
All right, well, one... Nothing has really changed with 173, other than I just noticed... The video's not working. Anyway, you can hear me, right? Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, fine. Don't worry about the video. In the First Amendment, there was a reference in B where they... We took away all the residency requirements, the durational residency requirements, and replaced it with individual circumstances that created eligibility. But at the very end, it was inserted... And it wasn't there in yesterday's or Monday's amendments. But there was a piece about incarceration is included in the period for purposes of the period of residency. But that is unnecessary because we no longer have residency as a part of the criteria.
Yeah, and Victor's brought that up a couple of times, so.
Yeah, it didn't show up in my bill until today, so that was weird.
That's weird, okay.
But otherwise, the amendments are, as we discussed the other day, and there's no changes there at all. And the same for 174. We discussed the amendments the other night and I gave a memo out to just give everybody a visual of what the Law Department's reasoning was for those amendments. So, if anybody has any questions, be happy to answer them.
And council members, again, prior to the hearing, we sent along that memo from the Law Department that Elena just spoke of. At this point, are there any questions or concerns for the Law Department based off of the technical amendments that they have put forward? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to jump over to Nikki, Director Thompson, or General Counsel Aaron DeGraffin, right? I guess you guys can pick the order in which you're going to go. The one thing I promise, Bill, is if we could go to the language associated with sitting down at the table and the closing aspect of it all, if we could go to that language first, Aaron, and then, we can go in whatever order that you guys have developed.
Sure, Council President Millsby. I am going to actually, if possible, Director Green, can you give Lucy Font the ability to share her screens that we can use the tracker that we've sent around to all the council members? So that they can... Since we don't have an actual draft, I still would like for them to be able to see the language and then, we can go to General Counsel DeGraffin, right? Just to the council members, I want to ensure that everyone does have the updated tracker that's dated for today that includes the amendments.
Director Green?
Yes, sir.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Green.
All right.
Director Thompson, is it most helpful if I share this chart? Or would you like me to pull up the most recent amendment drafts?
This is fine to share the chart because the drafts still have the highlights in them of places that we need to get updates from, from DLR. So, we can start with number seven because that's where General Counsel DeGraffin, right, will start. And then, I will go back to the eligibility requirements.
And does this all seem... Is this big enough for everyone? And does it look good? I can't see from you all's angle.
No, it looks great, Lucy. Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I want to make sure that everybody can hear me. I'm having trouble connecting with my internet here.
No, we can hear you, Mr. DeGraffin, right?
Excellent. Thank you, Council President. So, thank you for the introduction. Again, for Director... My name's Aaron DeGraffin. I'm General Counsel for the City Council. And this amendment is essentially to introduce and codify the idea that the reality, I should say, that the process of the city selling properties to individuals, whether they're developers of small scale or larger scales, are almost always governed by what's called land disposition agreement. And so, this amendment, number seven, is going to outline the existence of land disposition agreements and codify the fact that it will be the details that DHCD would develop in these land disposition agreements between program participants that will govern what is required of each program participant to successfully get to settlement and closing for transfer of ownership of the property from the city to a program participant. And so, this amendment does not include the details of what the land disposition agreements contain, but it does go through a few of the bare basics of what exists generally in most land disposition agreements that DHCD went over with Director Thompson, myself, and other members of the City Council President's Office, based on a few of the templates that we looked at. And so, I guess we can go through what is here on this chart. The first paragraph here discusses the land disposition agreements are going to allow DHCD to recover the property in the case that a participant is able to complete the project that they will present to the department as exists in the bill that, you know, the committee, the whole, has examined since the introduction of the bill. It is always contemplated that there will be some mechanisms that are going to be required for some... Excuse me. Mechanisms that allow the city to recover a property if a program participant has any issue as to why they can't continue with the project, whether their financing falls through or other life events happen. This... The land disposition agreements down here, the second paragraph, will also ensure that title only transfers at the settlement and that will only occur at settlement. There will be any to land disposition agreement conditions precedent that will be required for somebody to get to that... To get to that point of getting to settlement. And that will include the... What's listed here in the subsequent paragraphs, ensuring that the participants submit a project description and a schedule of progress that they and their contractors will expect to follow to proceed to getting the ultimate use and occupancy permit. A lot of what the reason for this amendment is because an individual would not be able to get a use and occupancy permit prior to having title ownership of the property. And as the original version of this bill had it, an individual was going to be leasing a property, which would not have allowed them to progress in the way that they would need to. In the next section here in that column, the land disposition agreements are going to require that participants demonstrate that they have financing to complete the project as they will have presented it to the... To the department. As Council President has explained in other prior hearings, prior meetings, that is a step that is generally going to be required anyway for an individual to get the financing that they are going to need to complete the project. So, this amendment, again, is letting... Putting everyone on notice as to some of the basic elements... as to, uh, some of the basic elements that are gonna be required on the DHCD documentation side, uh, that is contained in the land disposition agreements. The last one here that I see on my screen so far is that it'll mandate these progress reports, uh, as, uh, alluded to in the two paragraphs above there. So that DHCD will be able to, uh, follow up and track the progress of how somebody is progressing in the, the work, uh, that they've presented. And again, this is, uh, these are the elements of, the part of the elements of land disposition agreements that, uh, currently exist that, uh, DHCD enters into with, uh, developers of varying sizes, uh, as it is. And with that, I can't tell on my screen if there, okay, there we go.
Um, that's all that's on this chart. Aaron, if you wanted to add anything else, I can also just pull up the, the draft amendment, the most recent version we have.
No, um, I think that that's good, that, that's, that's good enough, because that is a, just the explanation of what the amendment is without having the amendment drafted. I think, uh, where we are, that I, I'm prepared to discuss it with any council members, if anybody has questions that we wanna discuss now.
Uh, Controller Henry, uh, let's see, Henry.
Yeah, I, I, I realized, uh, this is where I'm gonna, uh, definitely take advantage of you recognizing me as still a member of the council, if I get to ask questions now while the council is asking them. I, I, Aaron, thank you very much, I, I, I followed, I followed all of that. I believe the, the part I just wanted clarity on was, um, the section that says ensures that title to the property does not transfer until settlement. There had been some references in the existing legislation, um, to, uh, to, to things happening, once construction was complete, and I wanted to make sure that in this case, the settlement that is happening, um, where the title is transferring, is it clear that that's expected to happen prior to the commencement of construction?
That's exactly right, Mr. Controller. Uh, the, the main purpose, if, if this is doing one thing, it is to, uh, ensure that, uh, tr- title transfers before work gets done.
And that's a requirement of the, for the bank, uh, to provide the financing.
And I, and I don't, this is probably, um, something that HCD can speak to in, in, um, in terms of, my understanding is that the, uh, the clawback or the reversion, um, uh, clauses that, uh, the HCD are, you know, generally uses in their LDAs, they should take into account, um, any, any mortgage from, uh, a financing entity such that if this, you know, if all of this happens and the construction is done, and the money is spent, and then for whatever reason, either there's no use in occupancy permit or for any other reason, um, the occupant ends up, uh, losing the property to the city's, um, clawback, that the city will have to, um, cover the mortgage funds outlaid by the, um, by the financing entity if we're gonna take possession of the property back. Is, is that something that is either explicitly stated in the amendment, or is there enough flexibility in the amendment that the HCD can use their existing policies to make sure that happens?
So the amendment is, uh, set up for the latter, so that, the amendment is to, uh, put people on notice that that's a possibility, and that that is gonna be, uh, the, those will be terms that are contained in the final land disposition agreements that DHCD, again, will, uh, be, um, enacting. So, the, the amendment does not want to prescribe exactly how and what the manner is for DHCD to, to pursue the recovery.
Yeah, all right, uh, thank you, Mr. President, thank you very much.
No, thank you, Mr. Controller. Um, I guess, uh, Director Thompson, or, uh, General Counsel DeGraff and Wright, whatever your normal flow was, uh, to kinda cover the rest of the amendments, if we could start that. I just wanted to give, uh, Controller Henry an opportunity to hear, um, the amendments to one of his concerns that he raised.
No problem, Lucy, if you could go back to the eligibility requirements. Thank you so much. So, council members, just to recap, um, our previous hearings, we've heard extensively from the Law Department and from their report as well, that the durational requirements that we previously had in the legislation were, uh, further than our authority, and so, we wanted to find language that would still get us to the intended demographic that we are trying to serve with this program without, uh, rubbing up against, um, our charter authorities. And so, from some meetings that we've had with various stakeholders and community, um, one of the easiest and cleanest ways that we saw to address this issue was from an Urban Institute report that did some extensive, uh, data reporting on the state of, um, basically racially motivated investment patterns from 2019 in Baltimore City. And so, from that report, uh, which is also linked in the chart, you should be able to see it there. It includes maps and graphs from the report as well, and these are the factors that we are currently considering. Uh, so first, um, those residing in areas that have been discriminated against by redlining, um, as defined by the code, and those residing in neighborhoods where the average sale price of a home is, from the research that we've done in a NIF district, is about a hundred and nine thousand dollars. And we're still working with our, um, data analysts to confirm those numbers, and we don't have, again, a draft from DLR, but that is currently what we are considering. Um, those residing in neighborhoods that receive at least two hundred, uh, dollars per household in certain, in federal investments, those are gonna be your block grants, your home investment. And again, in the linked report, you will see a chart and a graph that shows, uh, specifically how we came to this two hundred, uh, dollar figure per household and the, the specific federal investment CBD, CDBG funds specifically. Both, um, our federal grants, and then, uh, those that are first-time home buyers, as we previously already outlined, um, in the last set of amendments from the February sixteenth meeting, we have not changed any of those factors, those are still there. And then again, just to summarize, and these additional factors were added because we were not allowed to use the durational requirements, but we really wanted some targeted points that, uh, could be used to really get to the residents with the greatest economic need and the history of repression that we're, we're trying to, our best to rectify.
At this time, are there any questions or concerns?
President Millsby?
Is that Conway?
Yep.
Uh, Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Uh, we may have touched on this, and I may have missed it, but, um, I noticed we have triple Xs for the sale price. Are we waiting on some information in order to decide that, or what are, what's the decision there?
That's the hundred and nine thousand dollar figure that, um, Director Thompson mentioned. Um, uh, it's the average sale price of the NIF district. So, we've been figuring out, uh, what, what that is, so it'll, it'll, it, it'll be reflected in the, uh, actual amendment, but it was the hundred and nine thousand dollar figure that Director Thompson, um, brought up.
Got it, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I'm sorry, was that Director Thompson?
Oh, no, you're fine.
Did, did I hear someone? I'm scrolling through to see if I see hands raised or, or someone speaking up. Are there any other questions or concerns for Director Thompson on this amendment four? Hearing and seeing none, um, Director Thompson, I think we can go to the next one.
And then the last amendment, um, Lucy, if you could scroll to amendment number nine.
Sorry, Mr. President. I was having a hard time.
Is that, uh, Councilman Dorsey?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. President, I was having a hard time unmuting myself.
No problem. Floor is yours.
Uh, thanks. Is it possible, uh, we could hear from the, uh, Housing Commissioner on this? I think that you may have some comments on the, the amendment.
Sure. If, if you, you have, uh, I mean, uh, we, we have all, everyone on to, to speak up, so, uh, Madam Commissioner, do, do you have comments on it?
Hi, uh, Council President, good evening. Um, I do have a couple of questions, if we can go back to amendment seven. And then, to amendment four, I have a question, but I did wanna ask, um, so, and, and point out that the, um, we, DHCD, one of the hardest things we encounter is, um, implementing or enforcing any reverter clause that we have in the LDAs. Because, once we go to settlement with the property, and, um, that buyer has put a mortgage on the property, that limits us in our ability, uh, to revert that, and, um, we actually never, um, take the property back. So I wanna point that out as a, um, just potential issue to be highlighted. I also.
Just to address that concern right there, totally understand, uh, we thought it was important to have the language in there. But, you know, the, uh, what we're riding with the property is the lien that will be placed on, so, you know, particularly as it relates to the construction costs that the city has provided, up to twenty-five thousand, or now fifty thousand dollars, would be like the, the secondary lien on the property. So, if, when that person goes to sell or refinance, the city would be made whole based off of what they put into the property.
Potentially, I mean, we, uh, we can potentially have a conversation offline about that, but we also see, um, some areas where, because we're a support, a subordinate position on, um, on that, the, you know, mortgage will be paid first. We often do not realize, um, you know, unless there is significant amounts of profit that are made at this time of sale, um, and if the property has not been completed, and, um, it's potential that, you know, it could be in a foreclosure situation, we definitely will not see any of those funds, um, you know, in turn, or realize anything that comes back specific to, um, the LDA in terms of the sale of the property.
Understood, yeah, understood, and, and that's consistent with all of the subsidies that we put on, and then we give to, to owners, and, and we put liens on, correct?
Um, we actually have a, a significant, um, amount, because most of ours are five-year forgivable, so they, uh, defer, you know, they go away after five years, and, um, are, we have actually a fairly decent repayment rate on our loans that are, you know, defer, are, um, deferred loans that are out there. We don't actually end up forgiving a significant amount of those. So, we do encounter it, but it's just, I wanna make everybody aware that this isn't an automatic, like, it, it doesn't there. I had a question on the, I mean, the, the one about submitting a project description to receive the use and occupancy permit. The project description and the schedule would be received, because that's, it would be a requirement for the application, it would be a requirement for approval to even sell the property to them. It has nothing tied to a use and occupancy permit, so I don't know what the, um, thinking was there, but I'd like to just explore that more, because they're not related in a way, because that project description and schedule would be something that would have to be reviewed before we even enter into the LDA to sell the property to the, um, to the buyer. So, it, it would already be in place, because it would be a requirement to even get to the point where we're executing an LDA, and it would have nothing to do with the use and occupancy permit, because the use of an occupancy permit is specifically tied to the building permits.
Yes, no, I totally agree, Madam Commissioner, sorry about that, I'm not sure if that's a typo or something that we have to correct. The, 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 the thought process was, uh, after they got the approval from the bank, and when they were going to close it with the city, that they would bring that project description to the city, because at that point, they would have had, already had it approved by the financial institution that was providing them the financing to do the work.
So we, we put that up front, because, and that goes into my next question about the one, the next suggested amendment that ensures that participants can demonstrate their ability to finance the project. That is happening at, the LDA won't ensure that, 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 we won't even make it to the LDA stage if they haven't provided their financing, um, their financing package to us as part of the application to purchase the property. So, the LDA doesn't have any component to ensure that they can demonstrate their ability, because we've already reviewed that, because that's part of what happens during the application piece, because we won't move a property to an LDA status or stage to, it happens anytime. We don't sell a property, um, unless you can demonstrate the minimum requirements that are needed to, you know, finance and, and rehabilitate the property. So, that also, I have kind of an order of things that doesn't necessarily make sense, um, to me that we potentially would look at, because that doesn't, also, kind of relate to the LDA.
Yeah, and, and I totally agree, that's a little redundant, because in order to get in the program and to be accepted in a program and placed in a ranking, uh, part of that package or your application, you have to provide proof that you've been pre-approved through one of the programs, so, totally, totally agree with that. Sure, uh, Aaron, if you have any comments or questions about, I mean, about those two, if that is somewhat of a typo, uh, knowing about the project description and schedule, that's much further up in the process, uh, as well as the, um, demonstrating that you have the finances to actually, um, do the project, to get into the program.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Council President, thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. One of the comments is that, uh, the, Commissioner Kennedy outlined in sort of the order of the proceeding, is that the amendment is intended to be reflecting exactly what you're talking about. The, uh, the, two of the LDAs that we looked at, uh, to make these suggested amendments, they reference the, you know, the maintaining, the, where, having demonstrated the financing is the condition precedent to getting to settlement, uh, and things of, you know, in, in that sort of a language. So, that's why it's in here, that's why it was suggested in here, sort of, in this, uh, in this section. But, the order of operations in terms of, those are things that are gonna be required, even, you know, before what they're getting down to negotiating the LDA, that makes perfect sense and is, uh, what, what the amendment is intended to reflect.
Okay, and, and we've have, I mean, our LDA is fairly standard, it doesn't, you know, change, especially for, um, single-family residential properties, it's, it's standard. So there might be, uh, you know, the language that states that they've demonstrated that, but I just wanted to be clear that the LDA itself doesn't have anything to actually, it doesn't impact that, because it's happening before, so.
I totally agree.
And I just wanted to be very clear on the recovering the property component, which is that, that's one of the issues that we've been struggling with, it's one of the things that we're looking on how to address in the future, but, um, very rarely, very rarely, um, are we ever able to enact the reverter clause and recover a property.
Yes, and again, just for the record, you know, the clawback, we just thought that was standard language to kinda put in there. But again, uh, just like all the other subsidy and grant programs, like the five-year one that you mentioned, the only difference with this is it will be ten years, because we want it to be a requirement for them to stay as owner-occupant units for, uh, ten years.
But I'm, yeah, I'm just saying, for, for everybody's expectations, from an enforcement standpoint, that if they leave at year seven, there isn't necessarily anything that we can do to take the property back, and then.
Just like if they leave at year four for the current programs, it's the same concern, but this is just longer, so I understand.
No, I mean, for the current programs, we actually do get the money back, because they're smaller amounts of money. I mean, it's a five thousand dollar, a ten thousand dollar grant over five years, so typically, we are able to. it's a five thousand dollar, ten thousand dollar grant over five years. So typically we are able to, because we're in a subordinate position, we are able to get that twenty-five hundred. So the grants are a different mechanism and a different issue than the actual property itself because the mortgage on the property is going to prohibit that. And depending upon how also, um, you have to be careful with this language as well because it could potentially impact. And I don't know if we've talked with, um, an F H A because I imagine that the most common and, you know, used rehab loan is going to be the F H A two oh three K. And I think it would behoove us if, you know, you are trying to, um, look at this, it would be to make sure that this doesn't impact. I mean, we already have a concern about being able to get, you know, financing and so forth, and we would want to make sure that this doesn't impact that as well.
Okay. Thank you so much, Madam Commissioner.
And then-
Now, I think you also had a question about number four.
Yeah, and number four, I had a question. I just wanted to clarify. I heard Director Thompson mention, um, C D B G. So I don't know what the, um, the, um, what that looks like for us? Because is it C D B G allocation? Is it, I guess, could I ask for some clarity, more clarity on those residing? Because in neighborhoods that receive at least two hundred dollars household and certain federal investments?
Director Thompson?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question one more time, Commissioner Kennedy?
Can I get more clarification on, um, the calculations and the funding sources involved in bullet number three, which is those residing in neighborhoods that receive at least two hundred dollars household per household and certain federal investments?
Yes, so we, we sent around and I'll, um, make sure it gets you specifically. You shared it with Mogar. Um, the report that we actually got this data from and it includes, it includes the chart as well. So generally what we, what we've seen is that communities that are a certain percentage of a certain demographic receive between two, up at least to about two hundred dollars per household in block grant funds and home investment funds. And so we're trying to track along with that, with that data. The census tracked along with that data. Um, but I'll get that report over to you. I sent it to Mogar, but it was right before the hearing. So I'll make sure you get it as well.
And who, is that a, a static chart that we would be expected to use? Or would that be calculations that would have to be done? Are you expect, would you expect that the program specifically uses that chart? And that that chart only for one specific point in time evaluation?
Absolutely not. Our, our hope is to try to index as much as possible so that we don't have to continuously, um, come back and, and readdress, readdress the numbers. I mean, try to have a more solid formula that we can consistently apply. But we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten that draft yet from D L R. So that's why we haven't presented it before either your office or the council members.
So for clarification, let me ask one more clarification question so I understand. It does the language that's being drafted state that we would utilize those point in time chart? Or does the language have an expectation that a new calculation for this two hundred dollar household investment happen every year? Because that's an impact on resources and staff and not even sure how we would, I mean-
Director, Director Thompson. Director Thompson, I think that that's where we go to the show, consider, um, uh, uh, wording prior to the, the breakout. I know we don't have the language in front of us, but I think that that's what we should kind of outline for Commissioner Kennedy at this point.
Yes, so absolutely, Commissioner Kennedy. So this language, these factors are, um, factors that we are hoping that the department will consider. So if it is a strain on resources to do annual reporting, then that's totally fine. We can accept that and, and go from there. We haven't, we have not parsed out in the language how often we'll be updating these numbers because the current numbers that we have, um, we're still trying to project them out, um, for, to better align with our, our goal and our intended purpose. So once we have that language, happy to send it over to you to try to figure out what's within your capacity to continuously report.
And Director Thompson and Commissioner Kennedy, I think it's really important to note that, um, this is a pilot. So this is established in this program for two years, uh, moving in direction of, of trying to do what we haven't been able to necessarily do on wholesale, uh, in the past. Uh, so this is not something that, you know, in ten years or in fifteen years, you're going to be coming back to the index of two thousand and, and twenty-two. Uh, but, um, the, the, when you look at the Urban Institute Report, um, that, that outlines it, uh, up to two thousand and nineteen, um, it kind of lays out the, the theory of where we got that number from and why we, where you utilizing that number of two hundred and, and the other numbers.
Okay. And so I'm thinking about the general public and how they're going to know whether or not they reside in an eligible area. Um, and I, this is in addition to the, the NIF outline. Is that correct? Because I know that we spoken about that at one of the other previous hearings and I believe, um, one of the council members had a question to clarify what the NIF, um, the NIF financing boundaries are. So these are in addition to those boundaries? And do you expect, because I would imagine that there's a significant amount of overlap. So is it expected that the general public would, that there were, that they would? I guess, ha, these, once again, to me, seem to be additional complicating factors on how to determine eligibility for the program.
And I think, I think that's a good point. Um, I think from a marketing branding perspective of when the city pushes this program out, is really looking at the historically, uh, historical red line map. And that's where we start at, right? And I think folks are going to apply, uh, and many of which are going to fit into this. An overwhelming amount are going to fit into, uh, these categories. But you're right, maybe there will be outliers that fall out. Um, what we wanted to do was ensuring that the intended target, folks who are renting now for fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a month, that could have a mortgage for a thousand dollars a month and start building up equity and have a pathway towards homeownership in our city as we continue to see our communities grow, uh, and we see that population from those areas decline. Um, we, uh, that is the intended. And that's why we have some of these breakouts and we just didn't leave it as, uh, just simple redlining, uh, 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 area. So, um, I don't, as for, for the average citizen, they probably don't know what C B D G grants are. Um, they're not going to necessarily know what, um, area median index is or where they kind of fit in. Uh, but that will be when they come and they apply based off of their, uh, uh, address and based off of their, uh, uh, income levels that, you know, the city will easily be able to determine if they meet the criteria. And, and like we said, we, uh, didn't do it as a must. Uh, it's really set up as a show, consider, uh, to allow the Department of Housing and Community Development to come up with a program uh, that makes sense as it relates to the intake associated with folks that are interested in the program.
Okay. I can understand that. I just, if I'm completing an application, if I'm going to put the time and energy into getting all of the documents such as, you know, looking at the properties, um, trying to even get of, of right of entry in order to do an inspection with my, um, with my contractor and so forth. There's a lot of work that would go into before, um, I actually make the application and then be told, sorry, you don't meet these-
No, no, Commissioner-
Eligibility factors.
Yeah, no, you don't have to, the way that the bill is structured, you don't have to pick out your particular property on the registry. The, the first step is be, being approved, being eligible for the program, um, before you go down the path of, of doing all the, the strenuous things that you, you kind of just, just mentioned. So, no, it, it's really about you applying and knowing that your characteristics and your background and you bring into the table what's required through that eligibility status is allowing you into the program. Then once you're in the program, you know, all the things specific about identifying a property and doing the things that you just mentioned, then you will go after. So, uh, a person applying for a program would not have wasted their time of trying to get right of entry, trying to bring a contractor out for a particular property, because anyone doing that would already be eligible to participate in the program.
Got you. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I don't know that that was, uh, clear to us from, um, the way that bill's been structured to-
Okay. If you have any recommendations of, 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 of making that, uh, clearer in the bill, definitely, um, happy and supportive to work with you.
And to also be clear that I want to, I, I think this is following up on a question that, um, Councilwoman McCray had asked in one of the hearings. It says that eligibility is that those reside in these year, in these areas. But then they can purchase a house anywhere, any vacant property in any area of the city? Because this says those residing in areas at, or those residing in these neighborhoods. So if I live in a neighborhood that doesn't meet this criteria, then I am not eligible to purchase a property through this program. So if I'm in a, in a neighborhood in the northeast, then I would not be eligible to participate because I most potentially do not meet in a eligible area. So you have to live in the area and then you can apply and then you can purchase a property anywhere in the city that is a vacant property that you want to purchase if it's on a block. Am I, because I think that that's a little bit different than how I interpreted when we reviewed that with, uh, Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah, you know, we've had to kind of juggle the eligibility. You know, at first we're really pushing the legacy resident, uh, to ensure that again, you know, this is not for developers, uh, this is not for speculators, this is not for folks that are outside of the city. We really want to target the communities that have been impacted the most through disproportionate amount of disinvestment uh, and have been living with the crime, the grime and the blight based off of the issues and the failed policy of redlining. Uh, so that's the areas that we're really targeting because those are the folks, um, and, you know, as we can, you know, see even from the last, uh, census, uh, that one are leaving for rightfully so. Uh, and that those are the folks that we're targeting to try to stay, to become homeowners in communities in which, um, they've grown up in, they love and they respect. So yes, uh, we, we really tried to develop a way, uh, to target the folks that, um, are, um, living through the byproducts of this failed policy that was shaped through bigotry.
Okay. So for clarity again, and I understand, I'm, I agree with you and we have a common, we have a common mutual goal of reversing those racist housing policies. We've, um, we share that. I just want to be clear on understanding. So if I happen to live in a northeast community that does not meet these eligibility factors, then I am not eligible to purchase a property through this program.
I guess the hard time I'm having, Commissioner, is to focus on the northeast because we have communities-
Or north, northwest or north or south.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's communities that are all throughout the city. So it's weird that we're like focused on northwest. Now, a- anywhere in the city, if you fall outside of the, the jurisdiction associated with redlining, uh, and the things that, the aforementioned things that kind of Director Thompson went over, then no, you're not eligible, uh, through the current language of this eligibility for this particular program. This is really targeting folks that, uh, are living, uh, in conditions that were impacted uh, by the racist policies of the past. That's the point of what we're attempting to do here, that you've had some level of eligibility, some level of residency there. Um, that's not to say that you aren't living in an apartment in the northeast, but you grew up in the heart of East Baltimore and you cannot participate in this program. No, you still are eligible to participate in this program. However, if you move from, say, Ohio and you live in maybe the original Northwood right now and you've been there for fifteen years, no, you will not be able to participate in this particular program.
But I'm gonna-
But again, I don't, I don't want to focus on northeast.
I'm not focused, okay, I won't focus on northeast. Let's say I live in any area of Baltimore City that does not meet these eligibility factors, then I cannot purchase a property through this program because then why would there be these eligibility? So if I live in an apartment in any of the areas that are outside of the NIF's boundary or do not meet, because they say specific that those residing in areas, you know, those residing in neighborhoods. So if I don't reside in that area, in any of the eligibility areas.
If you have never, if you've never resided in those areas?
Yeah, I'm living in a, I'm living in a apartment building in any north, southeast, west, central, wherever in the city. And I'm living in an apartment building.
Yeah.
And I don't inhabit, this goes back to the, even the, the difficulty of trying to determine the residency pieces. And I don't reside in any of these bulleted areas or, you know, that are here that are geographic boundaries. Then how, or the NIF boundary?
Yeah.
Then how would I be, I guess I'm, how would I be eligible for the program? Because I don't reside in these areas.
Understood. Have you always lived in the house that you're referring to in this hypothetical question?
In the apartment?
In, yeah, the apartment. Have you always lived in that area?
No.
Okay, have, have, were you, have you lived in the red line, uh, area of Baltimore City?
Um, yes, when I was five.
Okay. And so you grew up in a red line community?
From the age of five to eight.
For three years. Uh, I, I don't, I, I, we, first of all, we took the, the number of years out, but I think what's really important is it, it allows the Department of Housing and Community Development to consider. So she'll consider. So that doesn't make that person ineligible, um, to participate. That person is still eligible. I mean, if you want us, if, if you, if you would like us to make it more rigid and not give you the flexibility of developing a program and the autonomy of developing a program of really providing access and opportunity for the folks that I think you've already stated tonight that you know, um, we share mutual goals of trying to find access. If you would like to, for us to make it more rigid, we can. Um, but you know, I, I think someone who's grown up in a red line community, uh, should have access to this program. But again, someone who would say moved from Kentucky, uh, to the same area that you're talking about, no, they would not have access. This is really about folks that have been disproportionately disadvantaged, uh, by the failed housing policies of the city. Uh, and we, we provide a lot of flexibility for housing to kind of figure out how that program looks. We wrote it in as she'll consider, but we can make it a little more rigid if you think that that's more appropriate. And we're definitely willing to do so.
It's not about me, it, it's not about making it more rigid or looking at that. It's about trying to better understand the intent of the amendment and the impact of that amendment on the program design and the impact on staff and resources and the ability to actually be able to track, you know, um, occupancy or my residential occupancy back to when I was five or eight years old and happened to live on this block with my grandmother.
We do not want, we, we want folks to have been impacted. We don't want out of towners. We don't want speculators. We don't want developers. So I realize that, I realize that it's difficult to identify if someone has truly been impacted by the failed policies of the past, but I don't know if there's any other way for us to get over that. I think that this is something that we just have to try to do, right? I know that this is out of the box. It's, um, it's unconventional for our city to go after and do programs like this. But no matter what program you develop, if, it's about folks that have been disproportionately disadvantaged because the communities that they've been brought up in, that they've grown up in, that they've come to love, there's going to always be some level of eligibility associated with how can you prove that you live through these conditions? Like, there's no way around that.
Understood.
And, and again, and again, this is a pilot.
And, and we're not, you know, definitely, you know, would not be doing, selling to a developer or, you know, because that becomes evident in the type of financing and, you know, there's other things there that we do to screen to make sure that it's not a developer or that it's not somebody that, um, you know, just moved from Ohio that wants to now live or take advantage of the program. So, um, this is, once again, I'm just going back to wanting to understand the intent of the amendment language, the impact that that has on the applicants, the impact that it has on operations and to point out some of the difficulties that are going to be there when trying to actually identify and get the necessary documents to ensure that we're fulfilling what your goal is in serving residents that have been impacted in their lives at some point in time. What your goal is in serving residents that have been impacted in their lives at some point in time. By living in a redlined district and disinvested neighborhood in the city of Baltimore. And so that's the, you know, emphasis of my questions tonight and trying to get a better sense. On exactly what that looks like. And I think if we could see like the interlineated version of these amendments of where they fall in the bill. That would be extremely helpful in order to be able to provide any additional feedback.
Understood. And Madam Commissioner, it's it's my word that as soon as we get that from DLR, you will have that. To 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 review. I definitely understand your concerns and your questions. Really appreciate them. I know that, again, this is unconventional. I know that. It 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 it's it's. It's it's not business as usual of like how pro how how properties are moved in the city and the folks that we're trying to go after and specifically target. For for land disposition in the city. But that's also why we enjoy the enjoy going down this path. But more importantly, that's also why it's a pilot, right? And it's a pilot that we can look back in two years. And look to see what was effective, what necessarily wasn't effective and kind of move forward so we can continue to chip away. At disposing of property and land in our city different than what we've done for the past fifty or sixty years.
Thank you for the time.
No, thank you so much, Madam Commissioner. It's always great talking. Director Thompson, I think back to you. So we covered amendment number four and amendment number seven. Is there another amendment that we need to cover?
The last one we have to recover is amendment number nine. We see if you could just scroll up shortly. Just a little bit. So for amendment number nine, this was at the request of DHCD and the Law Department. At our last hearing on Monday did send around updated language. Our prior recapture language needed some filling out from the Law Department. And but we did get a lot of community response about one of the particular provisions and. I've touched base with Victor Turbola. We will, we don't have an updated draft yet that we have been able to review, which is why it's not before you now. But once we have an updated draft, we will circle back with that new recapture language. But as it stands, it has not changed from the iteration that was sent around on Monday. That is all of the amendments.
At this point, are there any other questions or concerns from council members? You can speak up. It's hard for me to scroll through. And see everyone. So if any members have any questions or concerns at this time for the three amendments we just covered.
Mr. President.
Is that Conway?
Conway, yep.
Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just wanted, if if you could help me out, I want to walk through a scenario to understand the recapture questions. Because I had thoughts and this is not my expertise. I really want to understand how this will play out and. Sort of how we we would think about dealing with it. As I understand it right now, it sounds like we're just kind of putting that in there as boilerplate language, but I wonder. Theoretically, how that might actually play out for HCD. So let's say we. A person is eligible for the program. They get a home, they get loan, they do the work to fix up the home. Let's say in this scenario, the work is incomplete. So the home is not complete. They don't get the use in occupancy. They don't get the title. It's a certain period goes by and maybe.
They'll get the title. They'll have the title at closing.
They will get the title. But it is.
They have the title clean, clean and clear.
Oh, well, even though the work isn't complete?
Yeah, they they don't need to, that's at closing. So they're going to already close before they start the work, before the bank will put the money into the project.
Okay, that helps. So they'll they'll own the property, but they don't, they don't have a use in occupancy.
Correct. They have to go through the whole permitting process and after they've done all the permitting process and have that approved. That's when they go for the use in occupancy and close out the job.
Got it. And so would there be a recapture scenario after that point? Or is that before?
Well, there could be a recapture scenario during or after all the things that you've mentioned. I think what Commissioner Kennedy was alluding to and what we said fully is that. That hardly ever happens. And like you said, we kind of put it in his boilerplate. I think the key to try to cover the city is that it'll be a lien on the property. So. Again, if a bank has invested a hundred and forty thousand dollars, say that's eighty percent of whatever it was appraised at. And it came time that the person in five years or six years or seven years. Kind of up and left or or whatever the property is going to have a subordinate rider on it associated with the twenty five, thirty, thirty five thousand dollars that the. City put into the deal on that particular property. So. And that lien is going to carry with that property. Now, obviously, if it's a foreclosure to Commissioner Kennedy's perspective. That 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 presents significant challenges to that amount of money. What I will argue is that over the course of those five, six, seven years, the city was. Receiving taxes on a property that was sitting dilapidated and vacant and not receiving any properties. What I will also argue is that the fact that you've had somebody come in and do a full scale renovation on a particular property in an area that. It is troubling today, hopefully attracts other attention and buyers around in that particular area. As the city continues to see what areas folks are buying these properties. Hopefully, from a housing community development perspective, we're putting additional interest and attention in those particular areas. So the residual effects of of one individual moving into a particular location is also what we're willing to see. I constantly share my story. I bought a house. It was it was abandoned for almost twenty years, didn't have a roof. Back wall was falling out in in West Baltimore, next to one of the most violent housing privately owned apartment units called Murder Mall. In the city of Baltimore. I had a vacant property next to me, four vacant properties across the street from me. It was valued at twenty thousand dollars. And I was and and I participated in FHA two oh three K program that Commissioner Kennedy has kind of outlined. So. I I say that because once I started fixing up my property, other people would drive by and they started looking at other properties and started fixing up their property. So. The residual effects, we cannot necessarily quantify. However, that's why, again, this is a program that's a pilot and.
Oh, I I I appreciate all those pieces. I just want to make sure I understand how it plays out and if there's a way to resolve those concerns. So. In a grab that's back grabback scenario. It it would happen potentially if they don't stay and reside in the property long enough. Or it could be a scenario, and this is the one I was thinking and where my question was coming from. Let's say they they started to work and let's say they move out, they give up. It didn't work. They got tired of the repair. You know, out of that hundred and twenty thousand dollar loan they got, they put maybe eighty or ninety thousand dollars into it, but didn't finish it. Who knows? The question that Commissioner Henry brought up was would the would the city pick up that that loan? It sounds like.
No, that probably would would. So when you get a construction loan, you actually close out. So. Your construction loan is safe for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, the example you mentioned. You're going to pay that whatever the amortization over that thirty years, if it was a thirty year note, you're going to pay that day one. So you're paying it every single month, even though. You're fixing up the property, you're putting on the roof, you're doing the windows, you're paying the amortized thirty year note every single month. So it's just like a traditional foreclosure. So if you stop paying your mortgage, which would be what a construction loan or two or three K loan is. The property would go into foreclosure the same exact way.
Got it.
You want to correct me or anything, Madam Commissioner?
Councilwoman, I just want to make a note that I think that we're potentially conflating two different issues.
Okay.
Because. The, it's the loan part, like that was part of. Twenty one dash oh one seven three, which would be the grant, the repair grant. And the purchase of the property, right? They are two separate items and they are not necessarily related because there could be someone. That purchases the property gets their, because the the. Twenty one dash oh one seven three requires that you are a homeowner. And that you're living in the property before we can even consider that application to provide you with that grant.
Right.
At the time of sale of the property. That twenty five thousand doesn't come into play and there will be people that actually don't get that. As part of their package that they're doing their their renovation on.
One could conceivably secure financing.
They would secure financing the construction before because the the. Twenty one dash oh one seven three says that you have to be a resident living in the property, like a homeowner. And, you know, there are resident requirements for that component for that separate bill, right? That's a whole other separate thing is the grant money. And that grant money may not actually come into play on this property because they, some people. Sometimes you'd be surprised how many times we see people actually turn away grant money for different things.
Or the easy example, Madam Commissioner, is if you were purchasing a privately owned property. So if you were going in and purchasing a privately owned property, wasn't getting the property from the city of Baltimore, then you would come in this pathway.
Potentially, maybe if you to get the grant. But what I what I want to make sure is that. There there's an understanding that the twenty, the money like that we would recapture some of that money on the grant. Is different than a reverter clause related to the property itself. And if I am a private entity and I am, you know, in trouble. And I'm going to, for whatever reason, because it also could be someone, you know, get sick, someone loses their job, someone isn't able to continue. Living in the property, paying the mortgage, or they don't complete the the, you know, they they don't complete. The renovation for whatever reason and they choose to sell that property to someone else. There isn't anything that prohibit that would. There isn't anything that would make them have to sell it back to us and we don't have a purchase price to be able to buy it. For that. So there isn't a way to, because there's already a mortgage on the property. There isn't anything that we would get back.
One second, we would, we have potentially the ability to get back the subordinate. Second mortgage lien that we have on there.
Only, no, only if it's related to the twenty five thousand dollar.
Yeah.
But if they don't have that, then no.
Yeah, correct. If it's not, so just like today, if we have a lien on a property and like the grant, whether it's five or ten thousand dollars. And it's the same scenario, we will not get that back. I mean, that that we.
No, if. No, it. If. I purchased the property through the program, I go to settlement, I have my financing, I'm working on the property, I get things going. And something happens and I have to walk away from the property and I either go to. But for whatever reason, I do not apply and I do not get a twenty five thousand dollar home repair grant.
Understood, yeah.
And I end up having a problem and I'm not able to finish the property and get that use in occupancy permit. Even though there may be something that states that the city could take the, that's what I'm saying is that. We never will be able to take that back or get anything in return. Because they didn't get that grant because that's a whole other separate process that is not. Part of the actual sale of the property from the city to the buyer.
Got you. Totally understand and I totally agree. I think the difference is, and that's a good scenario. So we had a dilapidated vacant structure. That we sold to someone for a dollar. To Mark's point, they put eighty thousand dollars in, they put in a brand new roof, they put in windows, they framed it out, they put in electric, they put in plumbing, they put in mechanic. They couldn't finish it or didn't want to finish for whatever reason. They walk away. The city doesn't get that property back. The city, that that property sits and now it's the property of the mortgage company. However. The benefit of the city is now this dilapidated structure that has been sitting there for ten, twelve, fifteen years. Is now in a much better position for someone to come in, complete the twenty or twenty five percent renovation. And and fix it up and move in. So I totally agree with with that scenario. At that point in that same scenario, the city has lost absolutely nothing. Because now, whether they were working on it for eight months or ten months or twelve months, one, the city was recouping taxes on it. Tied to the mortgage in which they had that we weren't doing before because somebody was paying maybe two hundred dollars or, no, because it was owned by the city, nobody was paying anything. But at a minimum also, so not only were we recouping those taxes, but now the the property is in a much better position. And much marketable and 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 from a selling perspective, because it is completed, you know, through the eighty or seventy five percent. You know, per your example. So I think that, I think even in that scenario, Mark, that's a huge advantage for the city of Baltimore. Now, the person decided to walk away for whatever reason, maybe it's health or maybe they were moving out of town, I don't know, but the city at that point hasn't lost anything.
Well, and I do want to say that we often see that there isn't an immediate renovation on those properties, that they still remain vacant. For some time, whether or not it's going through the foreclosure process. Or just, you know, are not able to sell for whatever reason. So while, yes. It does potentially put that property in a better position for someone because some of the renovation has occurred. It typically is a longer process and we would end up issuing a vacant building notice and then, you know, have to go through that. So it's. I I want to just be clear on what Councilwoman Conway put forth was the question about that reverter clause, which is that, no, like. We wouldn't be getting that property back because the mortgage is the biggest hindrance on that. And making the distinction between the twenty five, they're two separate things.
I'm so glad you made that clarification. I was looking at everything through the Dow House program. And they were automatically trying to get the twenty five or thirty thousand dollars. That's a a great example. Again, I think the city's in a much better position at that point because now we have a property. That came from being dilapidated, that was sitting for a decade or whatever. To a property that is least more attractive to a potential buyer because work has been performed in it. And quite frankly, the city shouldn't be have access or be given the ability of getting that property back. Because the bank at that point has put in eighty, ninety thousand dollars to your point, Chairman Conway.
That was actually, I I learned more from that response than I even asked. So thank you both. I I think another consideration that I was thinking about in that context is the person. So the person who put eighty thousand dollars into the property, now they're walking away. They walk away from the property. I guess they still have the property. Conceptually, they could sell it. And hopefully clear what they put into it. If not. They they walk away with debt and is is there anything we could do to help or protect or. Prevent that from happening?
Potentially, it would be a short sale.
Yeah, I mean, if a person decides to walk away or they lose their job and they can't afford the mortgage anymore. They get sick or family members in trouble and they have to make a decision. I mean, this is a mortgage. So. To 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 Madam Commissioners, you know, you know, in lieu of of potentially going into foreclosure because they're no longer paying on it, they could try to. Work something out with the bank and and do a short sale. And this would be a prime opportunity potentially for a short sale because again. Eighty thousand dollars out of a hundred and twenty or thirty or forty thousand dollars of work has been done. So it makes the property much more attractive than it was prior. So the hope is that someone would be able to get out, you know, from a from a short sale. But. From legislative, from a legislation perspective, there's nothing that we really could do to protect that scenario of someone being unable to pay their mortgage.
Thank you.
Not wanting to to pay their mortgage anymore.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions or concerns from council members? So it's six thirty four. I know that Director Thompson has been in touch with Legislative Reference. We don't, I I because there's so much out there. I don't want to vote on any of the amendments without you have physically having the amendments in hand. I think that, you know, that's the best way of ensuring that everyone knows exactly what they're voting for. Providing full transparency to the general public and just part of doing good governance. So what we're going to do is we're going to put the the hearing into recess. And what I ask is that we reconvene tomorrow at five o'clock, which we expect to have all the amendments that we've kind of covered today. As soon as we have them, each and every council member, you will have them. We'll also provide it to you, Madam Commissioner, and to the other folks on the call from the administration. Are there any questions or concerns regarding that or the process? Hearing and seeing none. See everybody tomorrow at five o'clock. Thank you.